Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to order on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Welcome, everyone. And I would like you to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Introduction of members, and I'm gonna go by my, I'm just gonna go around by my screen. So Erin, you wanna go first?
Erin Venaco, Millville.
And I'm Jane Reggio from Millville. Carrie?
Carrie Goddett from Blackstone.
Karen?
Erin Vernon, Millville.
Tara?
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Sarah?
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
And administrators, Jill?
Jill Pillagalarani, Director of Learn or Support Services.
Matt?
Matt Erwinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason?
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
We do have some special guests with us tonight who I assume Matt will introduce when we get there.
Certainly.
Okay. You should have received in your packet warrants for this meeting and the minutes of December tenth. I'll entertain a motion to move consent agenda A and do those as a package.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, moved by Erin, seconded by Karen for the warrants and the minutes from the December tenth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. And at this time, we can revisit later, but if there's any public forum, I don't know, Jesse, are there any questions or anybody wishing to come on to speak to the school committee?
I don't see anybody.
Right, if they come later, just let us know. So I, the next agenda item is just a brief discussion on where things stand with extracurricular activities and athletics. I think that there was some concern with increases of cases statewide, but I do not believe that MIAA has done anything different. And I know that hockey is on hold for right now anyway, for a little bit, till Sunday maybe, is that what I heard? But does anybody have something they would like the committee to consider or concern?
I'll just say something positive if, I, I, I just wanna commend the kids for following, strictly following the, the procedures that were put in place for them. I've seen nothing but the kids enjoying the opportunity to be able to participate. And, you know, I, I say keep doing what they're doing so they stay safe and follow the rules. I think a lot of people have gone above and beyond to get them to this part of their season, so I wanna thank the coaches and support staffs and the band, band directors. That would be my, I, I have, I have a few kids and a few activities. Yeah, and, and a lot of positive feedback. I do think there was some confusion with the, or concern with some cases over the break, but our activities had continued over that time and, and while we were in remote schools, so I think, I think it's going as, as good as it can for the moment.
Anyone else?
Wasn't hockey on quarantine until the fifth or the fourth?
Yes, because of close contact from a player from the other team. No one from the hockey team on the Bellingham Blackstone team, none of those students tested positive. They are again on a quarantine because again, a T, a player from the other team test, um, had symptoms, so I guess they're considering him positive. As of right this minute, I just actually walked in the door from testing my player. He's negative, and I think more than half the team has already tested negative. So the protocols in place seem to be protecting the kids.
But they came back for five days and then had another close contact, right?
At their next game, yep.
I don't expect anyone to change their minds. I haven't either, so just wanted to put that out there. I don't know about this, but.
I, I think that, I think the issue arises, not that, I do think families are making choices, and I think they're making them as safely as they can for their children who participate in sports, and as a parent of a sports child, I see the tremendous benefit in that interaction. I would see a tremendous benefit in interaction of return to school full-time if that was a possibility, but at the moment, given the guidelines that we're under, it's not, but this is a possibility, and I think there's benefit in that social interaction. However, having said that, I do think there is a risk when students participate in sports, when they, when they then attend any schooling that they do attend in person, those other people didn't get to have the same choice as those families whose children participated in sports. So we're essentially not giving other people a choice where we're giving some people a choice, and I think that's where the dichotomy exists for people having a difficult time with this decision. So I do think that, that parents in the district need to understand that it's a, an option we chose because it was available to our students and thought it was important. But there is a, there is a risk to those playing and to those who are, who are in cohorts with those playing.
And both towns are currently now in the red, for what it's worth. And I'll just reiterate my position that we should be careful about optional activities. Engaging in these optional activities, which sports are, otherwise they would be free. We would charging a fee. Which maybe we'll revisit when budget season comes up. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? I have heard from the public, but they clearly did not want to participate today, so we'll, we'll continue with our meeting. And I will turn this over to the Superintendent, Dr. DeFalco.
Thanks, Ms. Reggio. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you. I'm wondering if we should take the reports out of order and do the capital report first?
I think that would be great.
Okay, that way we don't jam up our guests, and we're still waiting on our lead nurse who's wrapping up some other issues currently, so if that's okay with the committee, we could, I'll, I'll actually turn this over to Ms. Erwinworth, and he can T S R.
That would be great, thank you.
Thanks.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. As many of you, if not all of you know, we have been engaging in a capital study project so that we could get a full assessment of where things stand with respect to our facilities and our grounds and the conditions thereof. We engaged DRA, Drummy, Roseanne, Anderson, the design firm, and they have done a tremendous job of working with the building leaders and the district leadership to really do a thorough analysis of the district. And we have with us here some representatives. Not sure why my cellphone is going off, excuse me. We have with us this evening Greg Smalley, Jim Barrett, and Doug LaJoy from DRA. And I will turn it over to these gentlemen to explain a little bit about what has been going on and where things stand with their finished report.
Thank you, Matt.
If you bear with me one second, folks, I'm pulling their presentation up, sorry, just type for me, sorry. So many documents.
I got it, but it's sideways, so one more.
And I, you know, I did all the prep work, and I opened everything and made sure it was ready, then I couldn't get it. It happened here. And Greg, I think Matt shared with you and to the committee, Greg made, and his team made a couple of small adjustments to the PowerPoint, so this is a little bit different than what you have in your packet, and I'm happy to resubmit this to the committee tomorrow to make sure that they have the exact presentation. That's okay. Okay, take it away.
Very good. So Jason, I'm assuming that you'll be changing pages on this as we go, correct?
Absolutely, you just tell me when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Okay, so I'm, I'm Greg Smalley, I was the project manager for this. Jim Barrett's our principal in charge, and Doug LaJoy's the principal with CES Consulting Engineering Services, and as Matt said, we've, we've spent some time taking your, taking you good deep at the district, and to jump onto that next slide there, Matt, I mean, Jason, sorry. And so, as you know, four buildings, they've spanned about six decades worth of pretty forward-thinking design for, for public schools. Each one of these buildings represents a, some, some pretty good design thinking and educational thinking when they were built, but you span six decades with that, and, and education moves on. So if we go to the next slide, we tried to approach these and ferret out pretty early what the drivers are, what are your key issues that you're trying to get to the bottom of, and there was a a, a good understanding that the facilities were aging out, you had decreasing student enrollment, and there was some concern for how well that would support twenty-first century learning, and as we're getting more and more fond of saying, we're a fifth of the way through the first century, we better catch up with it now, or we're gonna be left in the dust, so. We took, go to the next slide there, Matt. The, from those three areas of study, we had three things we wanted to be able to report on, and we felt it was germane to take it and appropriate to take it a little bit away from just facilities, and try to get a feeling for what people thought of the district and the schools, the facilities, so the human side as well as the physical side. Of course, look at the, the facilities and assess them, and then look at appropriateness for the future, and where do you go as the district continues to evolve, what might be possible. Next slide, please. So an opinion, the first thread here was the opinion of the students, the teachers, and the parents, so who uses the buildings and who supports the buildings from both the learning side and the teaching side. We did this through three different online polls through the district's network, so these were blind opinion polls, we don't know who answered. The district doesn't know who answered. We did hear a very strong response on, on all three. There were different questions given to each three, they followed a similar theme, but were asked differently, different questions and targeted more into who uses the, the building in a particular way. Next slide. So in general, the consensus opinion on the positive side, communication was seen as very much a positive, probably in the eighty to eighty-five percent positive communication back and forth between the districts, so not only did we hear that your message is getting out, but we heard, we, we were told that when people to you, you're hearing it and, and taking it in. Athletic fields are seen as a positive, we think that's as much for the, the, the activity and interactivity it brings to the school community as it is for the condition of them. The lack of crowded facilities, which is both positive and negative, because it just means a big part of that is because the facilities are bigger than they would need to be, and we'll talk about that at the end of this. And in some aspects of the curricular offerings, and a lot of this focused on the ability of teachers to work, not only to work, but being willing to work closely with students, we have a lot of personal notes in the responses from, from students and from teachers about the, the interaction. On the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about some of the negatives. And I can just say, conditions of facilities, 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 oh, virtually all of the negatives that came back.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
What was that?
I said, not a surprise.
No, no, that, that was our, that was our general thinking when it came into us as well, so. Next slide, Matt, Jason, I'm sorry, I'll get your name right. So here's our most prevalent themes, right? Your assets are the staff, the level of communication, the opinion, so it's, the assets are predominantly on the human side. It's what people think of the, of the district and how the F and the, and the public are interacting. The challenges all seem to be on the physical side. It's what do you own, how's it working, and what, what's it gonna take to get there? So our, our next slide was the next theme, which was, let's look at the existing conditions, so complexes to the left, Millville, left center, Hartnett, and the high school. So if we start with, the next slide is, we'll start with Millville. And it, in this, tonight and in this study, anytime you see the blue and red floor plan, that is how the rooms are used, so the blue is classrooms, red is gym, green is cafeteria and so on, and that's consistent throughout the project. So our next slide is looking at existing conditions at Millville. Nice little building, very well maintained, situated well, works pretty decently. The couple of concerns that we had with this were, obviously, pavement and sidewalks and whatnot are starting to deteriorate. Lower right is a fire exit, this is pretty typical here and at the complex of, you can get out of the building, but there's no walkway away from the building. It's a, it's a, a subtle piece of the code, but it needs to be maintained that once you get out of the, you can get away from it. And then the two through five-year-old playground area, not necessarily accessible the way it should be by code. One of the pieces we didn't show here is more or less a secure issue, is that C Street is probably in the planning of the building seen as the secondary egress route in an emergency. Now, we didn't necessarily see that as passable to the level that it should be to serve as a true secondary backup egress point, so. Moving down, next slide, we step inside the building. And here reflects the, the quality of the design in the building when, when it started, and that most of the issues are on code that has passed you, passed the building by, so. The left hand is railings on the stairwells are no longer compliant with code. It's a fairly easy fix, and it's common in buildings of this age. The other three photos are all ADA, not being able to access sinks and whatnot. And the upper right is more along the lines of security, that separation distance between the front door and the first adult human that you run into is a tough one to address in a building such as this. And I know Doug had some concerns with this building as well. I don't know if you wanna weigh in, Doug?
Sure, Greg, thanks. So you folks really had won us the first time we met about the mechanical systems, so we were kind of keen to that before we walked into the building, and, and you do have older systems. My understanding is, after we visited the elementary school, you folks replaced the boilers, so it sounds like you have a new boiler plant in place. However, you know, the unit ventilators that are in the classrooms are older. We were told that you, you experienced some freezing of pipes associated with the unit ventilators, so as part of our report, you know, we recommended putting glycol in the system. Again, I haven't gone back to the building since you did the boilers, so I don't know if the glycol's been put into those boilers and the, and the recirculating system or not. But the, the unit ventilators are, like I said, they're, they're aged, they're beyond their useful life. We also, you know, when we spoke to the custodians walking through the building, they, they shared with us a lot of temperature complaints amongst the, the classrooms and other spaces, so that's, that's typically a control issue, and, you know, you have, you have an older pneumatic style control system, which is known for, for failures like that, so you can, over time, you can either replace parts of the pneumatic system or do a general replacement of the entire system to an electronic controlled, uh, control system.
Thanks, Doug. So on the next slide, we look at just a quick recap of what works, what doesn't. And here you see slides, different colors used, the green are areas that match the MSBA size for spaces. The red is undersized, and the blue is oversized, so something we'll come back to as we get further down. And go to next slide, Jason, we look at project out costs for investment, so this, you see, twenty twenty-two is between now and two years out, then twenty twenty-five is now in five years out, then five to ten, and then between twenty thirty and twenty forty is a ten-year span. So the immediate need we're looking at is mostly ADA, quality of the sidewalks, trip, fall hazards, that type of stuff. Twenty, twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty are addressing issues Doug was talking about, upgrading the unit ventilators, which increases the quality of the interior environment in a classroom by reducing sound noise, sound levels. That also gets, addresses some of the fields and brings them up a little bit further to speed, and then to twenty thirty, twenty-four building is then starting to approach another round of upgrades or replacements for windows, roofs, that type of stuff, so you see a relatively big number out there. Then, in this case, it's pretty much between twenty thirty-five and twenty forty, when those systems really start to, to come down again for replacement. So our next building, next slide is the complex. Once again, a fairly interesting building that's kind of evolved as it's, as it's been needed to, to grow and adapt. Next slide, Jason. And here, once again, we're seeing the same themes, that we're seeing a lot of deterioration in the exteriors of the buildings. Not unusual, the, these pieces get beat up pretty well with winter weather. The tactile warnings for crosswalks are a relatively new piece, so the sidewalks are down before those were required. Access to the playgrounds is a, it's an ADA code requirement. And then the potential trip and fall hazard off the staircase to that lower left is, is kind of a frequent thing that we see as well. Move to the next slide and move inside this building. And this is where it gets a little bit more complex. We, we know that there's some asbestos-containing floor tiles under the carpet, there's a moisture issue with the, the slab that's causing those tiles to move. There are some code issues that go with it as well. So this one is, starts to, to mount up a couple of problems, and they start to compound when you factor in some of Doug's issues with this building as well. What'd you have here, Doug?
Not so much my issues, Greg, the building's issues.
Ours.
The, the building, it does not have sprinklers in it, it is grandfathered, but, you know, in, in a new school or in a renovated school, we, we really recommend providing sprinklers to meet code. You did do a boiler upgrade in two thousand and nineteen, so you have some nice boilers in the building. The unit ventilators, again, are aged, they're beyond their useful life, again, having had freezing problems in the past with no glycol in the loop, so it's something we'd recommend getting some glycol in there so you prevent freezing in the, in the future. Again, older control systems that sometimes work, sometimes don't work. And other issues like fire alarm system could be, could use to be upgraded. And energy efficiency kind of throughout the building, all of your buildings, energy efficiency is kind of a, of a, an item that, that we'd like to discuss with you at some point in time.
Thanks, Doug. Interesting, you move on from here. Next one, just a quick wrap-up, once again, try and bring everything together, and here our special ed room sizes tend to be a little bit on the small side, cafeteria, kitchen on the small side as well. And go to the next one, we'll do a recap on numbers here, so immediate concerns, tad over five hundred thousand, trying to get a handle on the ADA issues and start to set up to address that moisture mitigation, which we've put out in years three to five, and relatively big number on that one, trying to get a handle on how to get the moisture out from under the building. Nothing saying that you're going to spend anywhere near that number, but it, it needs a multi-pronged approach to address the moisture, where we're assuming that it's coming down the hill and getting under the building, and the building is actually stopping it. That also, between twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty includes addressing some of the unit ventilator issues and controls issues. And then between twenty thirty-five and twenty forty is finishing out the, the, the controls, heat, and windows on that building. So our next one is Hartnett, your newest building, nice project. Work came together pretty well, is, is held up quite well. You benefit here from having the person who first took it on as the lead custodian maintenance person for the building is still there, so if there's anything that's needed in the building, he knows it, that's for sure. Jump down one, Jason, and we'll talk a little bit here on the, the negatives. It isn't necessarily as much negatives as the, there's, is some issues with accessibility to the site, and I just love the picture of the bleachers out in the middle of the field, it's that you do need, the accessible path out to the field is tough, and interestingly enough, if you remove the bleachers, you pretty much remove the accessibility issue. The, there was some settlement in and around the parking lots, there's the start of deterioration of the drainage systems and some of the walkways and whatnot, all relatively easy to catch up with right now. The roof was an issue when it was first built, it's got a bunch of patching done to it, it is at the end of its lifespan. And the windows were pretty much an issue from the beginning, and they are, they're functioning, but I think you're going to get past the point where you can re-glaze them effectively. That would be something to look into, to see whether they can just be re-glazed or if the entire system needs to be changed out. Next slide, Jason. And inside, this is a bit more of just education, starting to outdistance the building. We did have some concern for the floor tiles moving. I'm not sure if that was a moisture issue or failure of the mast stick. They seem to be more of the latter. I don't know what evidence we have, otherwise. Carpets are starting to wear out, access to the stage, I don't believe would be the Mass Architectural Access Board, I don't think would allow that stage access. Nowadays, we have to go up the hallway to get onto the stage if you're in a wheelchair. That is an interesting question, but we placed it there for that reason. And the classroom technology is, is starting to lack a bit. Doug, I don't, I don't know what particularly you saw in this building.
Thanks, Greg. Only that, you know, with a building, I mean, it, it is your, your, your newest building. One would think that all of your systems are wonderful. They're just, you know, after twenty years of being in service, mechanical systems get tired, and certainly is more energy efficiency, energy efficient systems that can be in place, but it's not really a, a high priority for this building. You know, I think that the, in, in future years, you should start thinking about some replacements, like the boilers, you know, they're getting up in age, and you know, again, there's more energy efficient options available for you.
Thanks, Doug. And Jason, you move on there, you see the recap. Pretty much as we're saying, it's, this building is going to age and continue to age, it has a few more years left in it. And you'll see that in our cost projections on the next slide. And you see a relatively, you see a bump there in the five years out, that's replacing the roof. And then you see out in between twenty thirty-five and twenty forty, that's the system, so we're saying maybe you squeak ten years out of the boilers, that gets you to twenty thirty, perhaps fifteen years out of them gets you to twenty thirty-five, but somewhere in that twenty thirty to twenty forty range, we're saying get into there and replace the boilers. Somewhere in twenty twenty-five, that, that pink bar is windows and roofs. Windows you could bump out, roofs I think you want to get to pretty, pretty much within the next five years or so. That is that one, and then the high school must have been a heck of a building when it first opened. It's got some, some great spaces in it, and has kind of been bypassed by education, but then it's coming right back around to this type of design. has uh kind of been bypassed by education, but then it's coming right back around to this type of design and thinking as well. So um, if we move on, Jason, this is uh, this is an interesting uh building. And this is the one where a lot of people said they liked, they liked the feels, they liked the athletics of this. Um, the track is um deteriorating pretty quickly. It's just aging out. It's not that anyone's done anything to it, but you see the center photos, the the crack in the surface goes down to the substrate, which means the the top surface of the track is going to start to peel and deteriorate. Um, the track's not ADA accessible, the the um, the cattle gate arrangement, um, there's not uh, can't, you can't get through it with a wheelchair, but you can't even get to it with a wheelchair. Uh, a lot of stairs leading to nowhere like that lower left photo. Um, entry stairs are in tough shape, parking lots are in tough shape. Um, it's a building that you've gotten your money out of. Um, it's building that needs a lot of money put into it. Now, if we move inside the building, Jason, the next slide. I tried to put up pretty pictures, but um, the sorry, yeah, the the four on the left show you a lot of ADA issues, the um the the doorway access and making these doorways accessible is a real undertaking. Um, two floor library without an without an elevator inside doesn't cut it. The um hallway doors right up against an inaccessible uh drinking fountain. Um, auditorium's a nice space, has a lot of ADA issues. Um, stairwell railings, once again, the science labs are both ADA um problem. Um, indoor environmental quality problems and just um teaching appropriateness concerns. The um kitchen was pretty good, but um starting to age out equipment wise too. I know this one thrilled you, Doug, right?
There's a lot of issues uh on this one. Um, you know, most of the equipment is uh is original and uh and very aged. Um, you know, the domestic hot water uh heater is original, the building passes useful life. Um, there is no sprinkler system in the building as well. Um, steam boilers origin to the building. Um, unit ventilators, again, past a useful life and not very energy efficient. Same same with the controls, pneumatic controls.
So if we look at the overview on the next slide, um, pretty much says everything is um everything wants attention i- is the best way to say it about this building. And if we go to the cost projections, if anything, we we were too conservative on this building, but a- as an immediate need the next two years, probably a tad over two million dollars. Um, two to five, you're up in the eighteen million dollar range. That's getting roof stone boilers, a bunch of other pieces that really do need to be addressed before they just start breaking on you. Uh, between five and ten years out are the windows, parking lots, the ADA issues. And then out to twenty thirty five and twenty forty, it tails down a little bit, but you do the math on this, you're you're up in the forty, almost fifty million dollar range of what the building really does need in order to get up to speed. So if we go to the next slide, that's the this this slide is the district for all four of the buildings and and the need projections. So about three and a half million in the next two years, close to twenty five million in the next five years. Then fifteen um down to eight and then back up close to fifteen again. The there's a, what you find in these is between the ten and twenty year mark is where you have the some flexibility, some costs you can push back out, other costs will come forward as um as uh units break and whatnot, but um, looking like a uh a fairly hefty need in the next five to ten at the very least. So that was the physical side of it. Then we went to how does this work going out into the and what we did for this was mostly to say as a with a decreasing enrollment in a regional district, or with any district that covers the amount of land that you cover. Uh, we want to look at or or at least set up the discussion for how the buildings might be used going forward. So here we're back to our drawings that show um, how the building comports with the MSBA guidelines. And so we start with Millville. Classroom sizes are right in there. The um, the gym and uh auditorium are oversized by MSBA guidelines, cafeteria is undersized. Um, the lower right shows the um, the center column with the red mark is the um capacity of the building by MSBA guidelines, about four hundred ninety five kids, which is interestingly pretty close to what it was designed for. And then the yellow is what you have, uh, your projected enrollment this coming year, about two hundred fifty five. So two hundred fifty five kids in an MSBA funded school would be about forty five thousand square feet, you have about seventy eight, just under seventy eight thousand. So building's a a bit oversized for what you have. Um, jump to the next one and you see the uh, the complex. Same thing, classrooms pretty much sized quite nicely by MSBA guidelines, but cafeteria, kitchen, gymnasium, all undersized. Um, this building by MSBA guys, about seven hundred ninety five kids uh would be, would fit in a building that size by their guidelines. And you have about five hundred ninety uh going into it next year. So, or this year, sorry. So once again, you're running by the MSBA guidelines and put your faith in those however you want. You're running about seventy five percent capacity in the building. The um Hartnett is um, it shows up very very well in terms of sizing that with the uh classrooms hitting within five percent of the MSBA guidelines, the gym, cafeteria and library oversized. So things you don't ever want to give up because you don't get them back. Um, this building was at um somewhere range of um eight hundred and forty kids, which is uh by MSBA guidelines, once again, pretty close to what it was designed for originally. And you've got a population going in of about four hundred and thirteen, so about half of the uh design capacity. And finally, the high school, um, where interestingly enough, virtually all the classrooms end up being um oversized by MSBA guidelines. Not surprising for a nineteen seventies building. Um, most of the problems with this building get to be just the configuration of the rooms. And this building was um, if you were to build this size building, it'd be for nine hundred kids. Uh, would be that it's enrollment capacity, you'd get about four hundred and something going into it next year. So it sets up some interesting discussions for you and and potentially with MSBA going forward of you've got excess capacity, throw your minds back to that comment that we heard from everybody, uh, they like how much room is in the schools. Um, not surprising running it between sixty and eighty percent of the design capacity really does give you a lot of space to work with. Uh, that's the snapshot overview of the report we provided and certainly take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. I, not too many surprises for me, but anybody else, any comments or questions?
I'd actually like to make a comment. Um, first and foremost, thank you gentlemen for this presentation. I just want to be clear too, this presentation is accompanied by a very thorough report which details all of the specifics of issues with the mechanical systems and exterior ADA compliance issues. And in addition, as they've mentioned, it really helps put us on a trajectory to identify when are the most appropriate times to fix which specific issues. There's a lot to go through, don't don't get me wrong, but it really gives, it really gives a really firm starting point for a long term capital plan for the district. And it's it's in an excellent format with their sheets in a in a way that their entire system is also Excel based. So we can manipulate the information and sort through the data in various ways when we're trying to figure out what our next steps are going to be. So um, it's it it's been a very comprehensive study and it has been, it has yielded a tremendous amount of information for us to to start with. So thank you again.
Thanks for that. Um, also thanks to DRA. Appreciate all the hard work that they've done to put this together. I think to the committee, um, clearly there's a lot of conversation that we need to have. You know, my my sense is your your feeling of overwhelming kind of where do we start?
Right.
Uh, you know, that's that's what Matt and I have been talking a lot about, you know, looking at these reports. Really trying to wrap our arms around, you know, where to go from here. I think one of the things that you know, we continue to try to do is build programs and keep kids in school choice and, but when you look at the numbers that they showed, I mean, you know, we're running it at such a lower capacity uh than what the buildings are constructed for. You know, I think it's going to call for us to think incredibly creative.
Yep.
In terms of how we approach this. So um I don't have a good answer at this point, but I just want to put out there that if you're feeling overwhelmed, that's good. That means you're paying attention because I know both Matt and I are in that place too, thinking about you know, what's the best strategy uh short term and long term? Because the truth of the matter is that the parents and students and staff, their opinions are so critically important in this, you know, they're the client, so to speak, and they're, you know, they weighed in and shared their feedback. And so I think we have to think about how do we incorporate that into where we go next.
Well, and and how do we get the the community involved? I mean, you know, we went through our our EMR system, but you know, it's the taxpayers in the two towns that'll well, you know, hopefully it'll be MSBA projects and not foot the whole bill, but foot a good majority of the bill and and it's a, you know, even in five years' time, there's a lot of work. A lot of work that needs to be done. Um. And and overdue, I mean, you know, this was, this was well overdue. We all knew that. Um. But it really needs to become a top priority.
Well, and it's beyond the scope of Jane, to your exactly what you just said, you know, the overdue piece.
Mm hmm.
You know, the we're fixing as many of the small things, you know, that you that we can, but at the end of the day, the scale that we're looking at is so much larger than what you know, and what we're doing on a daily basis.
Yeah, I I just want to add to that briefly, um, to circle back to when we started this process. One of the reasons why we selected DRA was their experience as well, working with MSBA and working with districts to try to identify various options. And even through conversations uh with these individuals on the screen right now, we've batted around some ideas. I mean, clearly, just in general, we're not presenting anything now. But um, the hope is that we might be able to use them as a thought partner in this process. So even though it's a, where do we start? I I feel like we have some good partners that have been involved in this work and they can help with that piece. And to the financial piece that you mentioned, I ironically was going over the capital assessments today and noticing that we have a few big uh projects and uh debt service pieces that are actually coming to an end in a few years. So I was thinking to to myself as I was looking at the the um borrowing against the middle school project. It's almost, it's almost paid off.
Nice. Aaron, didn't we do the roof of the high school?
Yes, we did.
Wow.
New, it's new.
Yeah.
New.
It didn't last very long.
Well, um. So my question is, I as and I appreciate the breakdown like for the long term cost per building. More specifically back to the high school for the millions of dollars that just like you just said, Matt, working with DRA, it's a great partnership. I'm wondering in in DRA's experience, the cost of a new high school compared to, and and maybe that's in the information they gave us, but compared to what we'd be looking at as long term um, capital projects to piece things together. In in your opinions, where would we stand on a cost of a new building? And how long would from start to finish, does that type of project usually take?
If if I may, Aaron, I can uh help speak to this portion of before heading there, I would just like to say whenever we share a package of information like this, um we are always very cognizant of the fact that it can be overwhelming. It's it's just so much uh in so many places that how do you, how do you start becomes the question and and really this first pass of having to put all this information out there is very, very important. Because you really do have to have a full understanding of the landscape of the entirety of the regional school district before selecting, where do we begin? So I think that's something that I just wanted to say because as Greg was presenting and sharing this information and Doug was sharing the mechanical components, I I just got this sense of gosh, this is overwhelming, but uh, to your question specifically, Aaron, uh, currently, uh, our firm has had the opportunity and the pleasure to be part of four high school projects that are currently underway. Um, and so in terms of understanding cost centers around high schools, uh, we have a, we have a good understanding of that. As it stands currently, uh, for a total construction cost number, um, high schools can land easily between four hundred and seventy five dollars a square foot to possibly upwards of six hundred um, as as a range. Um, and in thinking of it that way, you know, uh, Greg, I'm sorry, the square footage of the high school as per MSBA?
Uh, let me see if I can find it for you right here. About ninety nine thousand square feet, a hundred thousand square.
It would, it would be about a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so at five hundred dollars a square foot, if we use the round numbers available, you know, it gives you that sense of you know, where in the spectrum new construction might fall. Um, and then certainly with that, um, the opportunity to probably at the most full level be able to garner the uh support of MSBA. So a recent example, current example, uh, is that of the Middleborough High School project. We're we're currently active on that. That's under construction currently. Uh, they hope to occupy this spring. Um. We also just concluded the uh Stoughton High School project and that is entering its first full year of use with the building itself. And now we're in the second phase of the field work. Uh, but that should wrap up this year as well. Those are two projects that I can think of that really would be applicable.
Actually, the other one that would fit well is Wakona, even though it's to the western end of the of the state. That's pretty close to the size that what you guys have, but um, what Matt alluded to was um, we we batted around some ideas of of looking at the district holistically. And look at Hartnett and its grade configuration, the high school's grade configuration, your curriculum offerings and start to look at, um, are there some potential both educational and financial benefits to um to to looking at these as potentially considering once again a middle high school setup. And the curriculum benefits that come from that and the building size benefit that would come from that. Um, I I think that's, it's certainly what MSBA is going to ask you if you start down the road of applying for a um, a grant to build something, ask you, have you considered that at your district size and the fact that you're already regionalized, that will be a um, that will be a question for them to um, to ask.
What about the timeframe for uh us like a start to finish of a project of that nature?
Yeah, a lot of it's driven by the time through the grant program, but let's put MSBA aside and say that you get your statement of interest in for their January deadline or December deadline and you're selected for that year. Um, generally, I'd like to say that on the inside of it, um fourteen to eighteen months for the planning, the approvals and the bidding, and then somewhere in the range of about two years for construction. So if you look at three to three and a half years from start to finish, um, you'll have some advantage if you could, if you were to replace the high school on the high school site. You'll have some site work advantages because it's already cleared and utilities are on site. Um, go to a fresh Um go to a fresh site that'll might add some time, but but it's kind of the um the the good timeframe. Is um keep the expectations in check. And somewhere about a year and a half to get it all through approvals and funding and um and two years to get it built and occupied.
And Greg, I can share with this group that the Middleborough project that I referenced very much falls or has fallen. Within those timeframes, they built upon their existing high school site. Uh which, by the way, was a DRA project back in the early seventies. Uh so we came back to town to help them do it one more time.
You're showing your age now.
Yeah, yeah, Jim is a lot older than he looks.
And so.
So where did the Middleborough? Students go during these phases?
It's a great question, Jane. It's um probably one of the most important questions when it comes to thinking about. The cost center associated with how do you manage the students while construction activities are happening. Middleborough was able to use the existing site. Um the existing site happened to have a parcel of property adjacent it that the town purchased. Um that additional purchase really didn't add that much acreage, but gave them an access road that led out so that. Construction activities came to the site from a different roadway than the actual school. Just made it much easier in terms of the construction cycle. But the students actually occupied the building right next to the site of the new construction. It's kind of cheek to jaw. And um it's been a highly successful project in terms of uh, you know. Uh the engagement of the community, uh having the community come to understand the issues and concerns of the existing high school. Because many people remember the high school on the last day they left it and gosh, it was in great shape then and. You look at it from the outside and the grass is cut and things look beautiful and it must be in the same condition. So it's really have to get people into your buildings and really have them have a sense of. What is the condition today? And that was a big portion of that project.
Now, Jason, you might do well to reach over to uh Superintendent Brian Lynch in Middleborough. He's uh. He he's a a good one for understanding how this all works. He comes from a long history of superintendents and they've all been through. Uh projects. He he's uh I know he doesn't mind being a mentor or a uh a great storyteller, so. I'd encourage you to do that if you're interested.
Greg, I I can share a really just quick story with the group. Brian Lynch was a fourteen-year-old or a twelve-year-old when they were building the high school back in the seventies. And his dad was superintendent of schools. And his dad used to take him through the facility while it was under construction.
Wow.
Told me about eight months ago that he happened to be on a tour of the building and his daughter was in tow. And he realized that it was this full, you know, circle of life that going on. So uh it was very uh very interesting story, but yeah, he is a great resource and really uh somebody that uh understands. Both what it takes locally, but also what it takes to deal with MSBA as a uh as a partner.
I was on the building committee for the Southbridge Middle High School uh project, but that was as a principal, so it was a different different. You know, and we opened a few new buildings in New Bedford uh when I was deputy superintendent there. But they were smaller, you know, they were smaller elementary schools. So it was uh but it was a fun project. It was actually, there was multiple projects going at once, but it was really. Quite interesting to watch them all in operation. You know, and and add to that all the accelerated uh repair projects we had going with roofs, windows. It was pretty cool, but it was it really was a lot to orchestrate.
Would imagine so.
I'd love to have a conversation with Brian. I'll reach out to him.
Uh the other one was um I did Southwick Tolland. Who had all their buildings on a campus and they moved to a middle school, high school arrangement. And I took um. Uh Dr. Barry and and the committee, school committee and the building committee, we went and toured. A bunch of middle high schools in the center of the state and uh. Got a much better understanding of the benefits and downside of the middle high school program. And uh really turned the corner for a lot of the school committee members who had some uh some opposition to it. So. If that becomes a point of uh of discussion. We I I can certainly reach out to those schools. I hope you guys reach out to those particular schools and go talk to them um and hear how that worked out for them.
Um so Jane, just to back step to you mentioning the roof, um. I'll I will also add, so sometime in the last nine years, we replaced the roof and we resurfaced the track that was pointed out. Um so those were both done in sometime in the realm of nine years. I can't give you exact years, but.
That's actually about right for a track, Erin, is about ten years.
Okay.
And what would that track last longer would be um inner perimeter drainage. Because the field is draining to the track and nothing to catch the water, so it's going under the track. It's getting between the surface. And the subsurface.
And and then the irrigation up there. So that probably added to the problem.
Um yeah, if it's if it's putting too much water on the field, it will add to it. It's mostly from snow melt and the big storms. That it all the water runs down, it sits against the edge of the track, and once it finds a way under, it will get there. But if you get nine years out of a track service, that's not bad. Um.
The the um. And I know we're gonna have many more, probably months of discussion about this, but the only other part that would be. Hard was, you know, one of the first things you all mentioned was how the community students, uh they they all said. You know, one of our positives is fields. And locate, you know, so how do you move, how do you go to a junior, senior, uh a junior high, high school? When you almost have the ideal building on one site and then all of your fields and everything that people were. Appreciating on the other site.
You can almost get from Hartnett to the south end of the high school um property.
Yeah.
If if you were to look at Hartnett and do a middle high school there and do a sports complex on the high school property. You can almost connect those two and and make that work, and that would allow you to. If you start to look creatively at it, to take down portions of the high school and return, retain perhaps a gym, auditorium, cafeteria link. And then augment your fields around that. That that that's um that's where you start to kick around curricular offerings um. You you start to get creative after a while and see what you can do with it.
I'm following the creative part.
Biomed lab, that kind of stuff.
I mean, I think it's a lot of information, but it's all it it's even. The negative parts or the overwhelming parts, the dollar amounts, it's still good information.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our towns are 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 hungry for our capital plans, so I think this is a a great way to start in a direction for us, so. I appreciate everything you've given us.
Very much so. Anyone else? Thoughts, questions, concerns at this point? It's a lot, so we will delve into it even further, I'm sure with and and a building committee will become very important. You know, with community people and hopefully at our next joint meeting, we can share this a little bit.
Jane, if I could offer to the group, um. Greg, Doug and I know that our our best kind of thoughts and ideas happen when we shut down the Zoom meeting and. Out to the kitchen and. I think that uh should your group collectively have ideas, questions, concerns, please feel free to. Channel them through Matt and have them come to us so that we can help you. You know, answer questions quickly on the fly, that type of thing.
Thank you.
By all means, that's something that we'd uh love to have the opportunity to do.
Right, thank you. I'll echo what everyone said. Thank you for the thorough thoroughness of this, uh you know, we were. Anxiously awaiting what what we would see, kind of knowing what we would see, but we appreciate all the effort. Thoroughness that went into it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um Jane, we have uh Karen with us here now, so if we could. Do the uh an update on our COVID nineteen situation and just talk a little bit about where things stand. Uh Karen, wanna unmute and?
Yeah, and and gentlemen, if you if you want to stay, you are more than welcome. If you want to just slowly hit that leave button, you're welcome to do that as well.
Uh thank you all.
Thank you, have a night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Uh hi, everyone. Um. So did you receive um the information on changes to the close contact? Um protocol and the travel protocol?
Yes, Karen, we did.
Okay, so um the travel protocol is uh really straightforward. Sometime quietly in December, the state changed the guidance from. A fourteen-day quarantine after travel to a high-risk state to um ten days. So the changes are just to reflect um that. So at this point, families or staff, if they travel, they either need to quarantine for. Ten days after they return or provide a a negative test to come back sooner. With the, any any questions on that one? With the close contact protocol, I'm sure everyone has heard. Um how the CDC came out with different guidelines for. A seven-day, a ten-day and a fourteen-day quarantine after. Excuse me, I'm still dealing with an asthma exacerbation. Um. Seven, ten and fourteen-day quarantine protocols. Um so we're doing a modif- we have a modified proposal. Uh so what our proposal is, is to have a ten-day. Have to be able to come off quarantine at at after the ten days. You need to have a PCR test at day five or later and be symptom-free. During that time period, and then you'd be able to come off. If you have symptoms or do not test, then you would need to quarantine for the full fourteen days.
For those.
So that's.
That's number four, everybody's looking.
Um I I did notice in the protocol, it said that they should have a test. And um it needs to be, they must have have a test. So that is something that I need to update from what I I did send you.
Oh yes, it says they should be tested. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
You you would also, in addition to these changes, you'd like to change the shoulds to musts?
Yeah. 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 And uh I have a another like guidance that I put together today. So I I didn't have a chance to to get that out to everyone, but it kind of goes through. All the the steps clear and whenever there is a close contact. I email all the parents as I believe um some of you have have gotten. Um a close contact email and um, you know, just to explain the dates and everything, so. This is something that would be emailed to staff and families. And um I'm also working with with Bridget and it will be posted on the website.
Anybody have any questions for Karen? I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended protocols as well as changing should to must.
Move.
Second by Sarah. Sarah, thank you.
And just a a quick update on um what's been happening um with the school. We. Are now up to over nine hundred um staff and students that the health offices have dealt with. We've had over, well, uh about fifty positive cases and over three hundred close contacts. Um so about three twenty-five, I think now.
It's the start of the school year, Karen, correct?
What's that? Yes, yeah. The um positive cases in close contacts, there's been. A huge uptick in like the last six, eight weeks. Um October, September and October were relatively quiet for both and. Some days they just come in fast and furious.
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Yeah, Thanksgiving and then Christmas break and um we'll get a. Things will settle down and then we're on Thanksgiving break, or not Thanksgiving, February.
Oh, yeah, true. Okay, uh any discussion, Erin?
I would just like to, um I know we've we've only had students back in four days, but Karen. Um how is the in-school testing? Have have you had to use the? The test yet and?
We we have on, you know, a few people. It it isn't really something that should be. Frequently used because if they have symptoms, they should be staying home, not being sent to school to be tested. So you know, there has been, um we have used used a few. Uh but certainly, I think as time goes on, we we may be seeing seeing more.
I I actually have a question, but I'm gonna wait. We have a motion on the floor. And so does anybody have any discussion about the part of changing the policy? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? So Jason, there was a new round of testing information that went out. Um. Is there is there talk of being able to just test faculty, staff, students in general?
Not yet. There they what went out when the test was the pool testing. And that was essentially in, actually, Karen, Matt and I are meeting tomorrow on that. Karen went to the webinar Tuesday. But the short version is they, you know, essentially will test class, there's a positive test within the pool. I believe in Karen correct it wrong, but I think they quarantine the whole class.
I I miss that. I'm multitasking here.
The pool testing, Karen?
Yeah.
The pool testing?
Yeah, that it it would. Require us to test every student and staff. It's extremely labor-intensive because. We would also be responsible for not only all the testing, but all the data entry. Now the notification, the contact tracing, transportation of um the specimens. And after the first six weeks, it will be a minimum of five dollars per test. So if we're doing, you know, for every thousand tests done, it's five thousand dollars plus.
Can you explain what it is though, Karen, the pool test?
Um basically, there is um. Everyone would do an individual swap or be swapped and all of those go into. One test together like per cla- per cohort and. So it comes back with one result rather than, say, ten individual results. So then if you have a classroom that tests positive. One of those ten people in the classroom is positive. So then at that point, we would need to do the binax now testing to see if any of those show up positive. to see if any of those show up positive. If those don't show up positive, then they need to go and get an individual PCR test.
Too much.
A lot of squeeze and very little juice.
Well, it doesn't sound like it would be productive for where we're trying to get.
No, no. I'm just trying to test people, that's it.
It's almost like...
Thanks. You guys just spread up...you just sped up our meeting tomorrow.
Yep, nope, that's a nope.
I apologize for asking my question in the middle of a motion. I was bored.
Oh, that's okay. That's a perfect pun.
Karen, aside from the pool testing, has there been any conversation on vaccinations for staff and teachers since they'd be the phase two, I believe, right?
Right now, I actually, on Tuesday, worked at a first responder clinic for the Blackstone area up in Upton. And we have another one on Saturday for the first responders. School nurses are now eligible because we are doing the testing to get the vaccines. But it...we're not at the point...I mean, they're talking February to April for educators, but I believe that timeline is going to be delayed because they're not even through the, what they call COVID-facing healthcare workers and first responders yet. So, and then they've added more elderly into the first phase. So, I'm thinking late February, maybe March. But it's all to be determined.
Slow, slow, slow.
Yep. And then there's going to be the question if they... The talk of releasing all of the doses out to the states, then there'll be the question of, is the second dose going to be available and when? So, that'll be the next thing. But we need to get at least the first doses in people.
And not through the black market?
Yeah.
Which is already happening.
Oh, yeah.
Sad, sad, sad. Anybody else? Anything else for Karen? Thank you very much, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow. So, we're going to move on to our preliminary FY22 budget presentation. So, let me again share my screen. Just bear with me for a moment here, and I will transition the PowerPoint. Hang on. All right, sorry, almost there. Let me just... Okay. So, let me first just preface this by saying the discussion that we just had regarding the capital plan, none of that is reflected in here. I want to make sure that we discuss that upfront.
Of course not.
So, anybody tuning in at home?
A little bit.
That is not reflected in our budget for next year. What is reflected in our budget is our continued focus on our district improvement strategy. We remain very much anchored in this work. I think everybody knows that even when the pandemic first started in March, we didn't stop the work and do COVID. We continued the work. And as a matter of fact, I would argue, we leaned into our strategy more than ever, frankly, to help keep our focus on the reason we do what we do every day. So, we're going to see our budget for FY22 this evening really framed out in two areas. The first is really the continuation of our district improvement strategy. And the second is really about the return and recovery of our students. That is not the phase we are in. I know it's a term that's used often at the state level, but we are not in the return and recovery phase yet. That will not, in fact, go into play until we have all of our children back in front of us. And so, a few important things to just, again, kind of remind and re-anchor ourselves in as we think about who are we building the budget for. This is the reason we come to work every day, frankly, for each and every one of the children that we serve in our two communities. You'll notice that our total enrollment, as we've talked about prior to this evening, is in fact down. We know that. For families leaving for private school because they had a full day offering to homeschool. We saw a very large uptick in our homeschool numbers. Our district population and demographics are changing. And it may seem subtle and somewhat slow, but our demographics are changing. Currently, we're at about 84%, 85% white, about 8.5%, 9% Hispanic, just under 2% black or African-American, just under 1% Asian and multirace, around 4%. Our English language learners, which is different than first languages not English, our ELL students is 1.5%. Our students who are whose first language is not English, but they're not ELLs, they are proficient, they are not in our ELL program, they're about 6%. Our students with special needs are 17.5%. Our high-need students, which is a combination of any of these and free and reduced lunch numbers are economically disadvantaged, is at 38%. And our free and reduced lunch numbers are about 38%. I just want to remind the committee again, when we look back to 2010, we were at about 10%, 10% to 12% free and reduced lunch. We are nearing 40. So, you know, it's just an important data point to keep in mind as we think about how we build the structure and the supports that our children need us to build, frankly, for them. An interesting data point, too, just to share, I never thought I'd be reporting out on something like this, frankly. It's a little bizarre. But because we are in the new kind of normal, if you will, at least for the school year regarding our structured learning time, meaning how often are our children in Blackstone and Millville in front of their teachers, whether it's face-to-face or whether it's through Zoom, also known as synchronous instruction. I will tell you, the terms asynchronous and synchronous instruction are terms I never want to use again after this year. I think there's value to them, but, you know, terms like that and pivot and shots in the arm. I've had it with all of those terms, as probably most of you have. So, but an interesting data point for us to talk about tonight. Out of 271 school districts across Massachusetts, and there are more than that, but the rest of the school systems, I think there's over 30, are full remote. Their children have not stepped foot in a building this year. Out of 271 that have some level of live learning, that means teachers in front of kids, whether it's virtual or in-person, we are doing very well. There are 11 districts out of the 271 that have more live learning time than BMR. And six of those 11 only have three hours more, and that's in a two-week span. So, when we think about the service that we are providing to our students, are we where we want to be? No. Do we have all of our children back yet? No. That certainly is the goal. We'll keep striving and trying to move toward that. But I will say that providing the level of direct instruction and support to students that we are able to do and seeing where we stand statewide feels pretty good. We know that our budget is always anchored and driven by our improvement, district improvement, or blueprint improvement work, by our demographics, meaning who we serve. And they're all...it's goal-driven. And I think you're going to see that tonight as we get into the logistics of our needs. But just an important piece to mention to folks at home, there are no new state-determined measures this year because there was no MCAS in 2020 in the spring. And, you know, I know that our families and community members know that, but I want to restate that. So, I won't run through these points, but what is on Slide 4 is essentially a snapshot of our state-determined measures of where we were in 2019. So, while I don't have updated numbers, and, you know, frankly, I don't know what will be released next year because the MCAS test that we are doing this year is for information only. It's an informative assessment that we'll be able to use to measure where our students are. I will tell you, you know, we obviously will be participating in MCAS. It's not something we're going to not do, but we have internal measures. And I know the school committee knows that. We're going to talk about those tonight, too. We're not waiting for MCAS to figure this out. I don't want our parents concerned about that. The district is right on top of this with our principals and teachers and support staff. But this is a snapshot from where we were last spring of 2019. And we'll see what gets released for data in spring of 2021. Also, I think important to note is the level of new programming and grants that we have been able to bring into the system, separate and apart from what we're going to see tonight. This is something that I will tell you is it takes a lot of horses to pull the cart. This is a lot of hard work from our central office, our team, our principals, our teachers, support staff. A lot of folks got involved in all of the work you're seeing here. But you can see there are hundreds and thousands of dollars in grants that we have brought in, some for new programs and new opportunities for students, most frankly. Our new biomedical pathway at the high school. We are applying for a new engineering and manufacturing pathway at the high school. That grant goes in tomorrow. I will tell you, it looks really strong. So, I'm feeling positive about that. I'm in the process with a very small group of superintendents in Blackstone Valley. And we are working on a new grant for Blackstone Valley high school students. And we are looking for upwards of $300,000 to expand our career pathways. So, I will tell you, we are incredibly dedicated to giving students career development options in the Blackstone Valley, particularly, obviously, in our district. And very excited this year that we have our first cohort of kids starting in welding February 2nd or 3rd. Our welding class will be starting. It's through the consortium, through the Ed Hub and the Chamber of Commerce in cybersecurity. We have a cybersecurity class starting through our, again, through the same partnership with the superintendents, and Hope Dale is running that class. So, in addition to the good work that we're doing here, we are still expanding and developing that work across the Blackstone Valley. We are in the first year of $100,000 middle school career explorations grant. If you have middle school students, I hope they spoke a little bit about some of the coding and robotics, artificial intelligence work that they've been doing, and studying different career options, including those that we offer at the high school, i.e. biomedicine and looking at different medical careers. So, we're really exposing students to those now. And then we have a series of other grants, Safer Schools Grants, the Maya Grant, and then all of our COVID relief grants. Some folks saw those as entitlement grants. And I will tell you that there was a lot of strategy and planning that had to go into those in order to get those grants secured and in place. I also know we've had a variety of special education grants and L grants. If you want to speak to those quickly, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, we have our yearly grants, but there were a couple that came out this year that we did apply for. I can't say they're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but every penny counts. So, we actually were able to apply for a early childhood improvement safety grant. So, there's a standard amount that grant comes for each school, and there's, you know, a little bit extra allocated for each student. So, we were...we did receive that award. It's just under $2,000, but like I said, every penny. And then we have another one that was recently applied for. It's a special education program improvement grant. And again, it's, you know, to improve the high-quality programs, you know, for in-person instruction, remote instruction, a combination of both. But again, for the grant, it was a strong emphasis on providing in-person to the greatest extent possible, which we are doing. So, I'm waiting to hear back on that one, and that one is about $17,600. So, you know, we're hoping for that award as well, right?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, we want the community to know that we are really working hard to find other ways to fund, you know, new programs, expand upon existing programs, and give students opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise have. So, I just think it's important to really highlight that. So, if we drill a little bit deeper and talk a bit about, you know, where does the return and recovery work fit into this? I want to take a moment and walk the community and the school committee through Slide 6. This is a really important piece of information because it looks at year-over-year testing outcomes for students at the beginning of year. So, this is our internal assessment, the STAR assessment that we give in the fall, winter, and spring. So, it's the same test, albeit we don't tend to look at it this way because the kids are different, right? So, the fall of '19 student, the fall of 2019 students are different than the fall of 2020 students, clearly. But we're trying to highlight a point here. And, you know, we heard a lot about, you know, learning loss. What's that going to look like? What's the impact going to be? Well, we did our own assessment and figured out very quickly, and we'll talk about these, that we have significant issues in the learning loss that has already transpired in mathematics. So, I'm going to talk about the data in a second. But the committee will see that in subsequent slides, we have put forward the request for additional support for our kids in math, frankly. We've got some big gaps to fill here. But let me kind of walk through here the data table in front of us. Essentially, in second grade, if you go over to the column to the right, you'll see the English Language Arts meeting in exceeding percent. The fall of 20 score is on the left, the fall of 19 score is on the right. What you will notice in most cases, the 2020 score is lower. This highlights very quickly to us that our students came in lower than the prior year's class. Now, again, they're different students. But these are, you know, these are fairly eye-opening data points, particularly when it relates to math. You'll see kind of an interesting situation in seventh grade English where our students are performing 5% better at the beginning of the year than they did the prior year. And similarly, in second grade math, you'll see that our kids came in a little bit stronger this year. But if you look at the math column, you will see a stark difference in grades three, grades four, grades six, grades seven, grade eight. And, you know, we've been having a lot of conversations about this as a leadership team because we've been on this issue since the fall, frankly. And on one hand, it kind of makes sense, right? Kids will go home and pick up a book. They'll pick up a magazine. They'll look at, you know, a graphic novel. They're probably not going to go home and practice equations. You know, I mean, maybe they will.
Sadly.
But some might. But math is one of those things that if we're not staying focused on it and we're not, you know, using it, you lose it, so to speak, right? So, you know, we wanted to highlight this because this clearly shows a sense of urgency in the work. For my mid-year evaluation, we'll look at the middle-of-year student results, and we'll look at the beginning and middle so we can kind of get a sense of where kids are then. And I will tell you, so parents aren't worried at home watching this, our central office team, principals, teachers have developed action plans in both of these areas as soon as we had the data to respond to this. So, I don't want folks to think either that we're just sitting and waiting. We've identified prerequisite skills that kids need in order to access certain skills at the new grade level to help them close those gaps so we can try to accelerate their growth. So, I don't want people to get the sense that we're just waiting. But you will see very much the return and recovery piece of the work is very important.
So, what's driving our FY22 budget? I'm going to bring us now to next year, a little bit of a look forward. As Jason mentioned already, our emphasis right up top is return and recovery. There are so many things that we are going to have to focus on. Jason mentioned the declining enrollment that we've seen this year. Hopefully, we'll see that bounce back a little bit for FY22, but we can't really...we can't really tell that right now. We mentioned that 36% of the students are classified as high-needs. That's either... That's either economically disadvantaged, English language learners, a special education. The reality is, we don't even know right now how many students are falling into the economically disadvantaged category. Our free and reduced lunch forms, we don't need them right now. Everyone is being served free meals. We know that families have been struggling, so that's a question mark. And we're hoping, you know, that we can make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of these students, but we know that the needs are severely increased as we return to school next year. Every family, whether it's financially, emotionally, academically, everyone has been impacted by this pandemic, and you will see that we are trying to plan for that as best as we can through our FY22 budget and the plans that we're making for our programs for the upcoming year.
Matt, if I could just add to that, just so the community is aware, between March and December 16th, we have served just to meals in our community, 264,000.
Oh, my God.
Just out in the community. So, and that's our small little food staff.
Food staff, yep.
So that's exactly to highlight Matt's point.
Yep. And we know everyone is going to be coming in with various academic gaps. We're not, we're not sure. Some kids were reading, some kids weren't, some kids maybe did a few math problems when...
Most kids didn't.
Most kids. I wasn't going to say it. Another thing that you'll see is a focus on our youngest learners. I mean, we really want to make sure that we're targeting early child, childhood learning in the district so that we can get these kids off to a good start. And this is not just for the pandemic return. This is in general. You know, we talk about eight is too late. If our kids don't have literacy and numeracy skills by the time they're coming into third and fourth grade, we, our struggles become that much more magnified. And of course, the last bullet here is the social and emotional demands that have been placed on our students and families, and we are going to try our best to address all of those with our planning for the upcoming year. Jason?
I'm crying.
So this slide looks familiar. What have we done with respect to the budget to date? So we've met, agreed on a timeline. We, the central office, we've asked principals to identify ways to remediate their academic programs and their emotional gaps that their students might be experiencing. Our principals went back to their schools and assessed what the needs were. They brought them forward to the central office administration. We asked them to make sure that they were focused still on their, I'm sorry, on their school improvement strategies, which are anchored back to our district blueprint. We want to keep the instructional focus, the instructional focus, but we want to add the component of return and recovery. Jason and I met with every one of the cost center managers, reviewed what their requests were and what their plans were to implement the funds and how, what those programs were going to look like. And after those conversations, we put the numbers together, and we have drafted two initial potential budgets. So one of the budgets we are looking at is a zero-based budget. This was built by district leadership to reflect pre-COVID staffing and materials at anticipated rates for FY22. So when we say zero-based, we started with nothing, didn't build off of last year's budget. We started with what are the specific needs? And quite frankly, they were, what are the specific needs if we return to school next year and COVID never happened? Which is a strange question to ask, we know, but from a financial perspective, we know that the question always comes up, well, what if we didn't add anything? What if we don't try to do these additional things? And we wanted to present that as one of the options, certainly not an option that we're recommending, as you will see. We also are presenting a needs-based budget, and that includes all of our return and recovery efforts. There's a continued focus on our teaching and learning, which we've been emphasizing for the last now two and a half years. We're talking about the remediation programs, and as I referenced a little bit earlier, really developing our preschool and early childhood programs as well. So what are the materials and resources that we're going to be looking at for FY22? We already went through the ELA curriculum process, identifying that curriculum. This year, we're looking at the math curriculum, and the hope is that next year we will be funding new curriculum materials, potentially only one year's worth based on the programs that we're using, but we're not sure. Those, those working groups have yet to come together and make their decisions. We still want to continue to support the ELA program implementation. As Dr. DeFalco mentioned, we have a huge focus on our career readiness, and some of that is through grant funding, but a lot of that grant funding also comes with matching funds that the district will need to put forward to purchase supplies and materials for those career readiness programs. Our social emotional learning resources, we need to focus on, programs, supplies, and making sure that we're getting the families and the kids, their needs addressed. We also, as the school committee knows, we've really embarked this year very heavily on a focus on diversity and social equity. So we'd like to continue to support those programs and purchase materials to make sure that we're, we're enabling our kids to understand social equity and really foster a climate in the district of diversity and understanding. As Jason mentioned, we're not asking for $2 million or $13 million, but we have set aside some small amounts of funds to address some of the very tertiary capital issues that we're beginning to notice. When we say skim the surface, we don't mean the surface of the track. We just mean the surface of all of the issues. And you will see that we also want to start addressing the needs of our post-employment benefits, OPAB, and that is something we know is important to the towns, and that's important to us as well. In fact, right after our budget conversation, I will talk a little bit further about that specifically.
Thanks, Matt. So what is in the budget for strategic staffing? So we're going to look at these in a couple of different ways, so just kind of bear with me as we walk through this. Currently, we have some positions in our budget that we have left unfilled, and if the committee, in the community, remember back in the fall, we talked a bit about the need to leave those unfilled this year because we had to pay the second half of the salaries for all of the COVID positions, the COVID-related positions that we're paying for with our COVID relief grant for the first half of the year with support from the towns, which we're very grateful for, and our, in our local budget for the second half. So if you're looking at Slide 11 and wondering, well, why are these kind of unfilled? It's for that reason. So just to kind of re-anchor us back in that. But, so these three positions are actually in our budget now, they're just not, they're just vacant. However, I'd like to draw your attention to the first position, the planning, teaching, and learning coach specifically for pre-K to 2 with the reconfigured schools. We want an instructional coach that is specialized just in early childhood to work with the teachers and students and staff at Millville for next year. That is not new money. That is actually, frankly, less in terms of the line you want to pull that from than the associate principal position that we had in the budget for the JFK AFM complex. We are not going to be moving forward with that administrative position. Instead, we are looking to provide that direct support to kids and teachers through coaching and support. So the money's already in the budget, and frankly, we'll need far less of it to fill the coaching position than we would to fill an associate principal position. The second is the district social worker. This is a critically important position. Frankly, it always has been. I would argue it's even more important now as we start thinking about our return and recovery. Again, this position, it's in the budget for FY21. We just left it vacant because of the need to fund those COVID-related positions. And the focus of this individual is to work with those families that are really experiencing significant challenges. We call them tier-three challenges for students, whether it's attendance, grades, mental health issues, issues of employment, issues of, for the families, issues of home security, food security. Essentially, it's to provide those wraparound services to our families most in need in our school system. Again, this money's already in the budget. And then the third is, it's a PE wellness teacher. We had a position that we eliminated, but we left it vacant. We didn't fill it. So there is a position there in the budget for that. So the second is really around programmatic needs, and so you will see that these positions, in fact, are new positions. We have a substantially separate kindergarten teacher. And actually, let me pause here and say that in our budget workshops coming up in the next two weeks, you will hear directly from the cost center managers, the principals, and from Ms. PG, that we'll actually talk about all of these in detail. So I'm going to, I'm going to just kind of quickly move through these because we have the workshops coming up, and they will really get into the weeds of the why and how these positions will function next year, should we be able to secure them. But we do have a substantially separate K teacher, a teacher of the deaf that actually we've already had to post for, for a new enrollment, a one-to-one nurse, a PK teacher. We are looking to expand our preschool program. And again, Jill will talk a bit more about that at her budget workshop, an applied behavior analysis technician, a part-time custodial position that'll be part-time at the two elementary schools, the two STEM teachers. This is very much what we've been talking about when we discuss the reorganization of the elementary schools to provide the equity across the two schools, an early childhood coordinator, and our department heads at the high school, curriculum leadership at the high school. We very much need to get our content people refocused and back in those positions. They were eliminated a few years ago. So again, I'm not going to belabor these. The cost center managers will delve very deeply into, into the why and how they'll function next year, should we be able to secure them. And then on Slide 13, we have an overview of our return and recovery positions. I want to bring us back to that data that we looked at in the beginning of our discussion this evening. These interventionists are critical in making sure that we can accelerate the closing and narrowing of those instructional gaps that have, that have essentially widened since March. I look at these positions as not forever positions. We shouldn't need these positions, you know, once we're able to, once we're able to close and narrow those gaps. We're looking at possibly a two-year need here. We should be able to, we hope, accelerate and close the gaps that were created through our pandemic within a year or two. We also will have additional COVID funds that we are applying for, that we could actually apply to these positions. So our hope is that this actually wouldn't even come out of our local budget, that we'd be able to fund it from our COVID relief grant that we'll be applying for very soon. So the design here is that if you think about the three slides we looked at for staffing, the first slide, we already have those, that those monies, that those dollars in the budget. They're in there now. The second slide is new positions. The third slide should be grant-funded, and they shouldn't be permanent forever positions in our system. Does that make sense? It's a little bit different this year with how we're framing it. Yep, okay. Matt, back to you, Matt.
Oh, Jesus. Good thing we're on camera, Matt, because I'd say something right about now.
He always leaves when you put up the big numbers.
Yeah.
No, but, so as I mentioned, there's the two different budgets that we've put together. I'm not going to run through the specifics on this. Each of you at the table have a PDF of this, this slide, so that's definitely easier to look at. It may not be super easy to look at, but it's there. A general summary of this is our zero-based budget, if we scroll all the way down to the bottom, we're looking at a $384,000 increase over our FY21 budget. That's zero-based. With these additional positions that Jason mentioned and talked through, we are looking at almost $900,000 more than the zero-based budget. So again, our needs-based budget is about $900,000 more than our zero-based budget. And in the next slides, actually, I'll let Jason turn, we're going to talk about a few things. There are some major considerations, and I can't stress enough, the key words here moving forward are assumptions, assumptions, assumptions. There is no clarity to what the state budget will be right now. There's a lot of question marks. So the considerations I'd like everyone to note before we move forward, the state's budget was just completed for this year. There are no cherry sheet numbers for '22. We are hoping, though, I will say, on January 27th, we're hoping for those numbers to come out. That's when the governor needs to submit his initial proposal for the budget. That coincides with our joint town meeting that we have, our group meeting. I don't know that there'll be district-specific numbers at that point, but whatever information I get that day, I will bring to the table for that evening. Minimum local contribution has not been established for either of the towns. So again, we've been seeing this pattern of shifting the cost from Chapter 78 to minimum local contributions. The burden of paying for the instruction and for the education has been shifted consistently toward the towns through minimum local contribution. You'll see in some of my assessment, hypothetical assessments later, I left minimum local contributions the same as they are this year. So not knowing what they will be, I just worked with the numbers that we had. We're only going to receive minimal aid increase. Again, we spoke about hold harmless last year. This is one of those areas where hold harmless kicks in and saves us. We will not receive less Chapter 70 funding than we received this year, supposedly. That puts us in hold harmless because we have seen declining enrollment, and if we were to take away funding for all of the students that we've seen the decline in enrollment touch, we would be in trouble. So we are in hold harmless. I am expecting our transportation reimbursement to be significantly lower in FY22. That's because the reimbursements we'll be getting will be for '20, and our costs were significantly decreased. The question will come up, well, didn't we save some money? The answer is yes. We're probably going to spend that money this year in transportation costs and elsewhere. Cost comparison. This slide will show you what some of my assumptions are moving forward. This is mainly for revenue, but a little bit of the costs. What you can see on the top, when you look at the school choice and the charter, school sending tuition, I applied a 3% increase to those costs. That's a fair assessment. However, if our charter numbers go up dramatically, we could see, we could see that change. And if our school choice numbers go up dramatically, we could also see that change. With respect to the state revenues, I'm anticipating that we will see a lower, we'll see a lower income for regional transportation. Here, I've noted approximately a $45,000 decrease in transportation reimbursement. That's both a lower spending for '20, and that's estimated at about a 66% reimbursement rate. Quite frankly, I'm not sure what the reimbursement rate will be. Quite frankly, I'm not sure what the reimbursement rate will be for next year. So I'm hoping that this is a conservative estimate, but time will tell. The other, the other big piece that we're looking at is I anticipate a significant decrease in our charter reimbursement. If you remember when we were looking at the budget for this year, last year, those numbers were going all over the place and that was due to the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. That was put on hold for this year. So we've seen actually some decent charter school reimbursements this year. But as they change the pattern of how many years they're reimbursing for and what percentage they're reimbursing, if they go with the initial Student Opportunity Act percentages, we will see a significant decrease, possibly up to and maybe even over $100,000 loss in reimbursement. So those are the key points for revenue assumptions. Jason? Again, I'd like to go over hypothetical assessment summaries. Emphasis on the hypothetical. There is no minimum local contribution number set. These are based on last year's numbers. There's assumptions with both respect to revenue and the costs. And excess and deficiency in one of the models is used and COVID-19 funds is used in one of the models. They've not been allocated and we've not had our E and D certified yet, though we are actually coming close to that. So I'm hoping that within the next few weeks, we will have E and D certified and that will be something we could add definitively to these, these pictures.
And Matt, these are about as hypothetical as you're going to get.
Assumptions, 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 assumptions. So this first assessment summary is based on the zero-based budget numbers that are presented. That brings our district budget. So if you look at the top few numbers, you'll see the school choice sending tuition and the charter school sending tuition, those are all going out. That all other number is the budget that we've put together as a district. Those other numbers are given to us based on our, our numbers of students. So with that, we're actually looking at this zero-based budget being only a 1.1% increase in total over our FY21 budget. If we move down to the bottom line, again, we're anticipating costs, we're anticipating increased costs, but we're also anticipating some loss in revenue. We're anticipating a shift in MLC, possibly even higher than it was last year. And if we scroll down a little, I'm not sure if you're able to get to the bottom of that slide or if it got cut off of that. Okay. So what remains for the towns on this slide is the $13,412. The, there's a breakdown to the right side and there is a PDF of this as well that has the full numbers in your packages. But this increase for the towns, for this model, the zero-based, Blackstone would be looking at a 5.62% increase to their assessment. And Millville would be looking at a 5.24% increase to their total assessment. These summaries also don't have capital expenses put into them. I mentioned earlier, I was working on capital assessments today. We actually just put out a bid for refinancing our short-term borrowing for the two projects that we have, still not transferred into bonds. We have the JFK Window and Boiler Project and the Millville Project, which we're trying to wrap into one financing package. We just got refinancing bids on that this morning. So at the, at the joint town meeting that we have, I will have total capital assessments as well. We want to move to the needs-based. So as we mentioned earlier, the needs-based has a significantly greater amount of staff and programs put into the budget. If you look at our all other at the top, that raises the all other cost from the $26,889 to $27,778, I'm sorry, to, I'm sorry, $25,441 in the all other to the $26,329 in the all other. So that's where you're seeing that approximate $900,000 increase in the remediation programs and the growth of our earlier childhood programs. That represents a 4.52% total increase to our budget. But what we are proposing, if we move in this direction, is utilizing other funds. So this model shows a use of some additional circuit breaker funds that will hopefully be getting in. Because our sped costs have increased, we will be getting increased reimbursements for those costs and we'll be counting on that to try to fund some of this programming. We also are going to be looking to use COVID-19 funding and some of our E and D. If we scroll down to the very bottom of our needs-based assessment with the application of these other funds, that actually brings the percent increase to 5.23% for Blackstone. And I apologize, it got cut off of this slide in the presentation mode. But again, it is in the PDF. 5.23% for Blackstone and 4.84% for Millville in this month.
So Matt, we can see that it's showing up on our slide.
Oh, it is. I apologize. It's not showing up in my, in my
I tried to get creative and circle it.
Yeah, you did. It circled.
Oh, great. That's blocked out by the choices on Zoom for me. I apologize. I've been saying it's not visible and it is. Great. That's where we are with our assessment proposals. The question is going to come up, well, how does this needs-based, how does this needs-based budget work and how did it come out lower than the zero-based budget? And the answer is clear, but I do want to point it out. We're using additional funding to offset the regular budget. So we're using circuit breaker funds, we're using COVID-19 funds that we're hoping, and we're using E and D. Again, I want to emphasize that even in this model, the E and D funds, I will never apply to general operating costs. So in this model, they've been applied to one-time capital costs and OPEB expenses.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you, how do we? I anticipate certain voices in Blackstone taking issue with Millville's assessment going down in the needs-based or am I reading that wrong?
So both assessments went down slightly in the, in the needs-based. And that's because of the application of the additional funds.
Yeah.
Millville's percentage will always go down at a greater rate than Blackstone's percentage just because of the, the smaller numbers.
We can get it. Just be ready to explain that.
Oh, I absolutely will. And that's, that's actually one of the things that I put this slide on there for. Because again, as I said, you go from zero-based to needs-based and the costs go down. And people will say, wait, I don't understand. But we're applying additional funds that we did not apply in that first model. And one of the questions will come up, and Jason and I discussed this. Well, why can't we just apply all of those funds to the first model then? Well, if you notice, those funds are specific. Circuit breaker funds, circuit breaker funds cover special education needs. And the greater the special education costs, the greater the, the circuit breaker reimbursements will have. That's why those funds are being applied towards expanding our early childhood program. And there's a number of positions in there that are very clearly special education-based. The other big source of funding is that COVID-19 relief. We can't apply that to our regularly, our general fund budget. We have to apply those to return and recovery steps and programs. Our next steps with this budget. You can see we have scheduled our budget workshops. The elementary schools on the 20th, the secondary, I'm sorry, and music, not to forget Todd. Secondary schools and athletics will be on the 21st. And special education district and technology will be on the 26th. And as we mentioned, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Boards of Selectment, Finance Subcommittee and our committee on January 27th. We will continue to comb through this. The purpose of the workshops is to express what the cost center managers are trying to highlight, see where the interests lie, if there are places where we could potentially make some changes, but will continue to adjust this budget, get it to a place that's palatable for both towns. As we've done the last two years, we're going to continue to, to work with everyone. It's a collaborative process and Jason and I try to emphasize that every budget season. It's transparent and it's collaborative. These are our first-run numbers. And again, we put them out there always a bit hesitantly because they're very preliminary. But we're going to work to getting them to a place where we can move this budget forward.
Thank you.
Are we on to my next presentation?
I do believe we are.
No questions or anything on?
Yeah, certainly. Well, let's pause for
Nope.
This may be where all of the questions are coming from. That brings us to the OPEB portion. You'll see that in this budget, there was $50,000, just a number that was put in there, $50,000 allocated for OPEB. We're hoping to pay for that through E and D that will, as I mentioned, hopefully get certified this coming, during this month.
Vaccines, vaccines are important.
Bear with me for a minute.
So I'm going to go, I know the slides. It's okay. I put them together.
Yeah.
So a few questions with respect to OPEB. The first question is going to be, so what is OPEB? OPEB, also known as our Other Post-Employment Benefits. We say OPEB and we're really referring to a trust fund that we would be establishing to fund these other post-employment benefits. These, so what happens is we start putting away money into this fund. It's an investment, a long-term investment. We start looking at our OPEB liability numbers and we're talking about upwards of the $37 million mark. So we're not looking to fund this this year. We're looking to start putting money away. And the purpose is to pay in the long run for our retirees' benefits. And another piece to note is that once this money is invested, it can only be used for funding retiree benefits. Why is it important? It, it helps to ensure some security for our retirees. And I do want to mention, our retirees, we do currently fund our retirees' benefits. The bulk of our retirees' benefits, which is their retirement plan, that is not what we're talking about. That's funded through MTRS. They put their own money into that pension system. They get that through MTRS. This is strictly for a health life and health dental life portion of benefits that are, these liabilities are, they're called, they're unrealized right now. They're future liabilities, but they're not costs that we incur. So I want to make it very clear that we don't have a $37 million bill that we're just pushing off until we can raise this money. We don't have that bill just yet. Where we are with this process? We've started looking into the OPEB process. Myself, Karen Vernon, our treasurer, who I can't see on the screen, but I believe she's still on the, in the meeting. Ron, our assistant treasurer. The three of us met with multiple providers of OPEB trust funds. We went through their presentations. We got an analysis of how each of those firms were doing from a financial standpoint and from an investment standpoint. And we've actually gone so far as to select one of those providers, which is Rockland Trust. We found out through our conversations yesterday that, that's great. They actually did the presentation for the joint, the Superintendent's Association and School Committee Association this past year. So they're a very reputable firm and they do work with a number of municipalities in, in the Commonwealth. We've also started to draft the necessary documents. The process involves adopting a policy to use an OPEB trust fund, adopting an investment strategy so that we are working with this investment firm to make sure that we're putting money away in a proper method. And we've already drafted these documents. And essentially, our next steps are to bring these documents forward. We'll have an initial reading at the school committee level. We'll explain a little bit more about the process and some of the investment options. And then we'll approve a funding policy. We'll fill out the application paperwork for the investment, the investment fund to be opened. And then, as any good government does, there's a 90-day waiting period for depositing funds. So this is one of those safeguards that was put in place by Massachusetts. They allow us to make the decision to put away sums of money. But since we can't touch this money for anything other than retiree benefits, they give a 90-day waiting period before we're allowed to put any funding into the account. And then, once we do so, we just work with the investment managers that are at the account branch at Rockland Trust, who we've met. They're terrific, very personable, very willing to work with us. And we hopefully watch our investments grow and grow and grow. That's the final step. Are there questions about this initial OPEB process?
Matt, when will people, when will committee members see the proposed policy?
So that's a great question.
I'm going to put it in the weekly update tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Have a chance to actually read through everything because the packets went out earlier and we didn't want to keep emailing, you know.
And Jason and I have noticed, and I'm sure the committee has noticed as well, there's really no shortage of school committee meetings in the upcoming few weeks, January and February. So what we'll have to do is an initial reading and then I'm sure at one of these upcoming meetings, we'll be able to adopt the policy, which we have drafted. And the 90-day waiting period shouldn't be an issue for us because we're not going to approve any funding until our budget gets approved and we wouldn't put any funding into play until after July 1st.
Anybody have any questions about this? Karen, do you have anything you want to add? Hey, learn it all about finances?
So that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Aaronworth?
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. I'll continue. So if you look at your revenue review report, which I put out, everything is moving along as it should be. We, we've been collecting our revenues, assessments are in a good place. Blackstone and Millville have continued to submit their assessments in a very timely fashion. So thank you to both towns. We've been getting in our Chapter 70 money. So everything is coming in as anticipated. Even the COVID-19 revenues that are listed separately, we've been drawing down on those accounts now. And you can see that we have collected already in the COVID Relief Fund, $300,000 of that money we've, we've brought in. We brought in $92,000 of the ESER funding. We brought in $92,000 of the ESER funding, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Relief Program. That was for starting things up and maintaining programs. So that's why there's still some funds left in that. And then we have our Technology Essentials, which is covering a good por, a good portion of these Chromebooks and our one-to-one initiative for this year, and the hotspots and some of those ongoing costs. If you look at your revenue, I'm sorry, if you look at your expenditure review, we have the two sections, which we started splitting this into. We have our general fund section on the first page, which things are going well. As Jason mentioned earlier, you're seeing some significant savings in our salaries because we didn't fund specific positions. That looks, as we've mentioned before, it looks like there's, we're in the black somewhere on that first page. But if we go to the second page, which includes COVID expenses and our COVID grant expenditures, we are going to overexpend our COVID relief grants. We have continued to expend money that is not being charged to any of these grants right now because the grants are mainly for staffing, a, a large portion of them. So there are a lot of expenses still with the disinfecting and the cleaning and the products that we've had to purchase. We've also now, and, and thank you to the towns who are picking up portions of this as well. As Jason mentioned, I want to thank them as well. There's also some, a lot of new technology costs that we've seen that are not part of that technology grant. But all of the equipment to do the live streaming that the teachers are doing, the cameras, the platforms, it's, it's quite costly. So we are still in a good place. We are anticipating that we're going to come through this fiscal year with some funds hopefully still there. But I don't want to give the impression that we're going to be coming out with the funds that are seen on that first expenditure page. Hopefully, we'll be able to make it through. And the other thing that we're now really thinking about, and, and we haven't started talking about extensively, we're looking at E and D applied for next year. So any of these funds that we're seeing that we can kind of roll over for this year from FY21, they're going to be used for the next two years to try to make sure that we're hitting that return and recovery and that we're really staying on top of the gaps that we're going to see. I mean, these are the things that we're, they're hard to discuss, but we're going to be needing additional funding for the next two to three-plus years to make sure that we address the concerns that COVID has introduced to the learning for, for our kids. Are there questions about the expenditure report or the revenue report?
No. No one? No.
And I've submitted the personnel report for submission only for your review. There is no facilities report.
There was a big one, Matt, there already was one.
I had a few things to say, but I really figured you might have heard enough, pretty much all that you can palette for, from a facilities perspective. Everything else is going great from a facility, from a facility standpoint. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you very much. Okay, any school committee items that anybody would like to address? All right, we have several meetings upcoming. We'll see each other quite a bit for the next two weeks, three times a week. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think Sarah just made that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Karen, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Who wants to stay on the call? Anybody? All right.